It's invited to attend. However, discussion between board members and the public is not permitted at this time. No new cases will be heard after nine P M. Red Bank zoning board of adjustment maintained a policy cutoff hour of nine thirty for its hearings. Any applicants not heard this evening will be carried over to the next scheduled meeting. Uh, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Bible, United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with a day in which it is crawl.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think we have two members to swear in. Vincent Light and Eugene Horowitz. So gentlemen, if you could stand and we'll swear you in together. And when I say state your name, we'll start with you first, and then we can do everything together. If you could raise your right hand, I state your name.
Eugene Horowitz.
Vincent Light.
You solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of a member.
A member.
Of the Red Bank zoning board of adjustment.
Red Bank zoning board of adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations.
Hey, we don't have any, yes, I haven't seen any non-agenda items. I'm guessing so. We'll start with, um, what do we have? Uh, may, maybe minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes from like twentieth.
And Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vincent Light.
I can't vote.
Oh, Paul Cagni.
Yes.
Okay, we have a couple resolutions of appointment.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, you recall last meeting, you all made motions to appoint the board attorney, conflict board attorney, board engineer and conflict board engineer. These are just the resolutions memorializing those appointments by law were required to, uh, to do that. So respectfully, if you could just go one by one and, and, um, vote on those resolutions. Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, board attorney, Kevin Kennedy.
A second.
And Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sherman Lee.
Yes.
Vincent Light.
Same.
Paul Cagni.
Yes.
Uh, Mark Lexton is board attorney, conflict board attorney.
Hey, I have a motion for conflict board attorney, Mark Lexton.
I'll make a motion.
So I'll second.
And Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yeah.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vincent Light.
Same.
Paul Cagni.
Yes.
Okay, we have a resolution appointment for board engineer, Mr. Herman.
Hello.
All right.
Good.
I'll move the resolution appointing. I'll second the board engineer.
And Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vincent Light.
Same.
Paul Cagni.
Yes.
Okay, we have a resolution appointment for conflict board engineer, and I believe it's CME, correct? I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
And Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vincent Light.
Same.
Paul Cagni.
Yes.
Okay, new business, uh, I think one eighty-seven Riverside Avenue is being carried.
Sure, uh, Mr. Chairman, the one eighty-seven Riverside Avenue, that's the billboard application. That is going to be carried into October fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And, uh, because there's been a lot of time, the applicant, we've requested, and the applicant agreed to renotice and, uh, for record-keeping purposes, uh, just so the board members know, Shawna and I received confirmation from the applicant's attorney that she consented to extend the timeframe within which the board had to act, has to act. And that's important because New Jersey law says, once an application is deemed complete, if it's not adjudicated in a certain timeframe or any agreed upon extension, there could, could, under certain circumstances, be a potential automatic approval. Automatic approval is obviously anathema to everything that we do, so we always make sure that we have. So we do have that. So again, uh, the, uh, one eighty-seven Riverside Avenue, out front media application will be carried to October fifth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty P M., and the applicant will, uh, renotice. We, we can make a motion to, to, to carry that.
Okay, uh, I'll make the motion to carry that application.
And Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vincent Light.
Yes.
Paul Cagni.
Yes.
Okay, next order business, one twenty-one, got James Parker Boulevard.
Okay, and if you could, as the applicant comes forward, a couple of things before I forget. We're gonna swear in, uh, Ed Herman, our board engineer. Ed, you're the board engineer. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, and, uh, just for the record, so this is a continuation, and Shawna, I believe Eugene and Vince are not eligible to vote tonight. Obviously, they can participate and discuss, um, and all those good things and make comments known, uh, but not eligible to vote, correct? Okay, and then, uh, Rick Brodsky, um, when you, why don't you, after you start, just officially will mark into the record your, any of the revised plans that you submitted or any documentation that you submitted.
Yeah, sure, thanks. Uh, Rick Brodsky on behalf of the applicant lunch break. Yeah, we do have one, one additional exhibit, which is the revised site plan. I think we're up to A four, Kevin.
Okay, revised site plan prepared by?
By signage plan.
I'm sorry?
By signage plan.
By, prepared by?
Delaney Johnson Wagner.
Got it, and is there a date on that?
It is, but, um, I can't read it.
Okay, we'll get that date.
It's revision dated eight fourteen twenty-three.
Eight fourteen twenty-three. Thank you, so that'll be A four.
Thanks, um, this chair members of the board, uh, again, Rick Brodsky on behalf of Lunch Break. Um, as most of the board members will recall, we were here at, at the, uh, uh, the board's meeting last month, uh, proposing a signage plan for the new lunch break headquarters previously, uh, approved by this board and well under construction. Um, there was a lot of, uh, discussion and, and feedback, uh, and we got the board's, uh, thoughts and concerns with regard to one of the proposed signs, one of the four proposed signs in particular. And that was an internally eliminated, eternally eliminated, um, method award sign. We heard concerns about the proposed locations, the, the, the intersection and, uh, and, and the potential, uh, the distraction that that sign might cause. So, so the long and the short of it is we removed that sign from, from the proposal, uh, and replaced it with with basically, basically a more, you know, standard type sign, which provides the information that, that was important for us. Remember, you heard testimony that, that, uh, lots of the clients, uh, many of the clients may not have access to, to computers or websites and things like that, check for updates. And we wanted some way to get that information to, to, to the clients. And we came up with, with, uh, uh, an alternative, which we think is will work and, and, uh, close to us effectively. And, uh, and Eric Wagner, seated to my right, the architect, will walk the board through that real quickly. Um, but that's really the sum and substance of, of the revision that we made, and I think, you know, it's responsive to the concerns of the board, uh, that we have. So unless the board has any questions, we can, uh, Mr. Wagner, just walk the board through it real quick.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Eric, remain sworn, right?
You were previously sworn, correct?
Yes.
And you recognize you still under oath?
Yes.
And just for the record, state your name and, uh, business address.
Eric Wagner, twenty-one Peters Place, Red Bank.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric, if you would, just, yeah, go right into that. I think focus just on the revision.
In the location of the building where we've been proposing the digital signage, which was to the right end of the building. That area, we are now proposing a static, um, sign that provides information on the different programs that Lunch Break provides. This will be a bilingual sign, English on the left, Spanish on the right, as you can see in the lower left of the board that's up here, and that's what Shawna has, has put up as well. Uh, we have the different programs identified, and they're on panels that would be replaceable. So if the programs change, functions change, they would be able to swap them out. This is fairly similar to what you would see in a professional office building, listing the different tenants. Um, I think if the blue color will tie in with the glow on the roof, if you've been by there, we have a blue metal roof. And, um, we've got the logo on there, and we can take this opportunity to also put a, uh, street number for the address on it as well.
And Eric, no illumination proposed for any of the signs, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, and the, uh, situation remains that although we are proposing four separate signs, the total square footage, uh, combined for all is less than.
Correct, it's well under the allowable total area per sign, rather than one very large sign, we do have it broken down into four separate areas, as I testified last three, three of the signs are stayed the same, and then we swapped out one shown on the lower left for the, uh, digital sign.
Questions? Hey, any questions from the board?
Uh, yeah, so the variance required would just be for the number of signs, is that correct?
That's correct. Four or one is permitted for illumination.
There's, there's also a variance and for the, the, the placement at the very top of the, uh, lunch break, technically, it doesn't apply with a provision of the ordinance.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? For this one, yes. Okay, anything else you have?
All I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to approve or deny this application?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second.
And, uh, may I just, a couple of real quick things here. I think, uh, one of the things was, um, which is sort of unique. Mr. Brodsky, I think the, the Red Bank, uh, ordinance is interpreted in such a way that your mural sign is not a sign per se for the ordinance definition, correct? So this board doesn't approve the mural, and you need to get approval from the Borough Council for that, and you're aware of that.
Separate procedure, separate application directly from their council.
And then some of the things that we talked about, Mr. Chairman, uh, well, typically, we say that, uh, if you approve it, it's subject to all the promises and commitments and representations the team made during the public hearing process. And, um, I think we'd said, no third-party advertising, and obviously, the, the, the digital sign has gone and no illumination. And, um, compliance with Shawna's review memorandum. And I think we always say signs are not to comply, are not to interfere with any site triangle easements and, and our other standards, outside approvals and, um, all those types of things. So are those acceptable, Mr. Brodsky?
Yes.
And are those acceptable to the motioner and the person who seconded?
Okay, yeah, yes.
Okay, and Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Paul Cagni.
Yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and luck. Mr. Chairman, can I just say one other thing? I'm sorry, uh, you'll recall at the last, at the last meeting, there was a discussion about the possibility of, uh, me having a res, a resolution prepared in advance. I have one, I can speed read it if you want, there's absolutely no requirement. If you want to say no, let's just do it the old-fashioned way, we can do that, it is up to the pleasure of the board.
Uh, I, I, okay, well, I said, go ahead.
Okay, um, obviously, the resolution would recite who testified and what they testified and what was marked into the record and, and the variances that are needed for the number of variances in that one location. And you'd basically say that this proposal requires bulk variance approval, and the Red Bank zoning board of adjustment is statutorily authorized to grant such bulk variance relief. And with regard to that application and the requested relief, um, we're gonna say, based upon the testimony and evidence presented, there is a need for signage at the site. And we're also going to say that the signs approved herein will actually aid the orientation of individuals and/or drivers and pedestrians who are looking for the subject, uh, uh, lunch break establishment and/or services provided associated therewith. Uh, you're gonna say that if it's acceptable to you, the new signs approved herein will not divert drivers' collective eyes from the roadway. Um, they will, uh, the new signs will reasonably, um, increase visibility of the lunch break organization in this area of town. And it's obviously, uh, this approval is not gonna change the existing footprint or any previously approved footprint of the building. And it's not going to, if this is just for signs, it's not gonna change the nature of operations at the site, it's not gonna change the nature of previously approved uses for the site. It's not gonna change the number of, uh, clients or employees associated with the site. And also, the signs will help, at least the, the large sign will help unfamiliar drivers, uh, identify as to the existence and location. And we're also going to say that, uh, per the testimony and evidence presented, uh, uh, some of the signs, or at least one of the signs, will help uh, advise lunch break clients as to the availability of certain services provided on-site, including the timeframe for the same location, uh, for the same. And the testimony was that that's particularly appropriate in a situation where some of the clients might not have regular access, uh, to the computer, uh, that they could otherwise see that. And we're gonna say that, um, given the, uh, nature of the heavily trafficked roadway and the non-symmetrical, uh, realities of that, um, intersection, uh, it is important that the signs that we approve not distract, uh, or, uh, yeah, not distract motorists. And the board notes positively that there's no blinking or flashing lights, uh, which will distract drivers. And let's see, um, the new signs are attractive and will help promote a desirable visual environment. And there was no known public objections associated with, uh, the application or the request. And the signs are appropriately sized for the area in which they're located to be visibly, appropriate visible, appropriately visible for the motorists and pedestrians. And we have a couple other real quick things. We're gonna say that the variance is needed for the number of signs. One allowed for proposed. Details of each of these signs were set forth in the plans, they were described in the resolution, and they were obviously, uh, discussed at length during the public hearing process. And notwithstanding the need for a variance for the number of signs, the board is aware that the total sign area is well, uh, below what the total sign area, sign area is otherwise allowed. And each of the signs will likely have a distinct and useful purpose. And the main, uh, lunch break logo sign will clearly identify the lunch break, uh, building and establishment. And the other signs will advertise as specific events and, uh, services which are provided at the site and the dates and the times for the, for the same. The applicant's representatives testified that that one particular sign will be used to advertise, identify, uh, the time and place for certain events, and the applicant's representatives testified that such upfront, upfront advertising is necessary and appropriate, uh, for the many, uh, lunch break clients who will, who will obviously visit the site, particularly in that some of them may not have, uh, direct access to a computer at all times. And so it is important for the ability of the people who are going to use those services to know that those services that exist. Lunch break offers many life-affirming and, uh, services, and obviously, in order to maximize the benefits associated with those, uh, life-affirming services which are offered, they want, and the board understands that, that we want the clients, will be having access to those services, to be aware of those services. And the board finds that this sign will help advance, uh, that purpose of allowing people to be aware of what services are offered. And we, as a board, find that that's a, a definitive and legitimate, uh, benefit associated with this application. And we're also going to say that, um, as initially submitted, um, the application called for a digitally placed sign at the site. And a number of board members had concerns about the digital nature and the flashing lights, or potential flashing lights. Specifically, board members were concerned about the potential distraction to drivers, particularly in that of the weird way I said it here, unique, uh, unique, uh, or geometrically unique and non-traditional and, uh, misangled, so to speak, nature of, of that intersection. A considerable part of the July meeting was focused on that said issue, including whether the police department and/or the traffic safety division had reviewed and approved the proposal, whether they thought it conserve, served as a potential distraction, what was the accident rate, uh, associated with that site, et cetera. And after the first hearing was adjourned so that additional information could be obtained from the police and the, uh, traffic safety office, the applicant's representatives revised the plan so as to eliminate that digital sign. And, uh, the elimination of that digital sign assuaged the board member's concerns in the said regard. And also, just to, uh, the last three, are in adopting its sign ordinance, the Red Bank Borough Council established the following objective to encourage signs which promote a desirable visual environment through creative yet orderly design arrangements. The sign ordinance also says that we are encouraged to, uh, approve signs which aid orientation, identify activities, describe local history and character, or serve other educational purposes. And you all, as a board, are going to find that, subject to the conditions that you've talked about, uh, those, uh, approval of these signs will advance those purposes. So, Mr. Chairman, took a little bit longer than I'd wanted, but if that's acceptable, and I didn't, I'm not gonna read the conditions because I just read them, but if that's acceptable, we can adopt that, subject to, uh, review by Shawna's official technical review.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the resolution, as read by Mr. Kennedy.
I'll applaud. Second.
And Tori.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Paul Cagni.
Yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have two seventy-three Shrewsbury Avenue up next.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as the applicant's team comes forward, we have a couple of, uh, things to do. Uh, just for the record, uh, board member Eileen Hogan is going to, uh, recuse herself from this, uh, application out of an abundance of court and for a potential, um, uh, due to a potential conflict of interest. And, uh, just so you know, Borough has an ordinance that, uh, says that when someone recuses himself, we need to state that, and needs to reflect that in the minute. So if you could just put that in the minute, that would be great. And then we're also going to, uh, swear in for the second and final time tonight, Ed Herman. Ed, you are the board engineer. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, and then we're gonna officially, uh, well, let's just see, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? Okay, I don't see any. And for the record, gonna reflect, let the record reflect that, uh, uh, Shawna's office and my office reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. And just for our new members of, of the board, notice is very important. Notice has to be done correctly, and that's be advertised in time and sent to the right addresses, and it's gotta contain information to put the world on notice what this application is about. Um, and we say in the business that notice is jurisdictional, so if it was not done properly, we would not even have jurisdiction. So it's always important for us to acknowledge that notice was, was done correctly, so we have jurisdiction to proceed. And then what I'd like to do is just to officially mark into the record what we, as a board, have before us. So we're gonna start, uh, A one is the application package. And A two is the preliminary and final major site plan prepared by, uh, C, I'm sorry, prepared by Ingenuity Infrastructure, and that's dated April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, consisting of nine sheets. A three is the architectural plans prepared by, uh, Cristiano Pereira, and that's, uh, CPA Architecture dated April fifth, two thousand twenty-three, consisting of seven sheets. A four is the intent to proceed, dated April sixth, two thousand twenty-three. A five is a disclosure of ownership, and that's dated April sixth, two thousand twenty-three. A six is the stormwater management report dated April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. A seven is our green development checklist, that's undated. A eight is the development permit, uh, slash zoning permit denial letter dated February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. And A nine is the traffic impact report dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. And just continuing, A ten is the affordable housing plan, and that's dated August of two thousand twenty-three. A eleven is the resident selection plan. A twelve is the parents with a plan narrative, and that's dated August first, two thousand twenty-three. A thirteen is the parents with a plan brochure, and that's undated. A fourteen is the environmental commission report, and that was an email, and I don't think that was dated. A fifteen is the shade tree commission, uh, report or email, and that was dated May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. A sixteen is the affordable housing attorney review memorandum, and that was dated August eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. And last but not least, is the T and M associates review memorandum, and that's dated August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And before we turn it over to Mr. McKenna, the applicant's attorney, I just wanna say one other real quick thing to our new, our new friends on the board and our veteran friends. This is a use variance application, and there's a couple of, um, unique or, uh, magic rules that apply to the world of use variance applications. And so, uh, first and foremost is, in order for a, a use variance application to be approved, the applicant needs five affirmative yes votes. So unlike the last application where a majority vote, uh, counted, uh, in this application, uh, there's only seven votes that, that, uh, get called, and the applicant needs five affirmative yes votes to receive it. So if it were ultimately four people voted yes and three people said no, that application fails because, under New Jersey law, for a use variance, you need five affirmative yes votes. And real, real, real generally, uh, and we're gonna hear a lot about this from, uh, Mr. McKenna and, and his witnesses, is just, I think this is, as our new board, this is our first use variance application, and so generally speaking, with a use variance, the applicant has to prove the so-called positive criteria and the negative criteria. And the positive criteria means that they're good, they prove to you that they do something that advances the purposes of zoning. And those purposes of zoning real quickly are things that promote the public health, safety and welfare, helping to secure, uh, the public from fire and flood, providing adequate airspace and light, uh, promoting the establishment of appropriate population densities, and providing desirable visual environments. Just a couple more. Uh, but that's the so-called positive criteria. The negative criteria is that the applicant has to prove to you that the application can be granted without causing substantial detriment to the public good. Uh, easy words, but when you apply it, it's, it's a tough standard, and that's what we're gonna hear. And we're probably gonna hear something from the applicant's team about a little bit of a unique feature with this application between the positive criteria, but we'll get into that momentarily. And then, I promise this is the end, um, we're gonna turn it over to Mr. McKenna, and he's going to, for conflict I promise this is the end. We're gonna turn it over to Mr. McKenna and he's going to, for conflict of interest purposes, identify. The applicant entity and the principals and the owner entity of the principals and any other, just so we can do an internal conflict check. So that, you know, if we hear the name ABC Corporation, we might not think anything, but if we say here that the principal of. Is Joe Smith, we might say, oh, that's my business partner, that's my cousin. So we always want to have that. So against that long-winded and I apologize for delay. Introduction, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Edward McKenna. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy. I am Edward cannot currently have. Yeah, actual applicant is. Thrive Red Bank, Thrive R B L S C. Principles of that. Entity are John Klein will be testified.
Mr. McKenna, we need just big close through.
Uh, John Klein, uh, who is sitting beside me here, his wife Robin Klein will be sitting right here. As well as Karen Louie will be testifying also very shortly. There are two entities, I'll call you, I call it, that are involved in this particular application. Thrive is essentially the owner. And patients with a plan, uh, it's like parents with a plan. Are the provider of services that are in connection with this. So here testimony about two entities, but Thrive is essentially the owner. Patients, uh, parents with a plan, excuse me, are the, uh, it's the entity that will be supplying the services involved. And those are the three principles involved in both entities.
And is that? Just for the record, is is one of them the owner of the building right now or is that, has the owner consented?
The owner's content.
Okay. So hearing those names, uh, do any of those names cause any issues or concerns or questions about conflicts for any of the board members? Okay. Thank you.
You have me for you this evening, a very unique application. It is a neuro-inclusive supportive. Living residential development. It's very unique. It will be the first one in the state. First one in the state of New Jersey, I'm sorry. And it is a unique opportunity for Red Bank's son, a leader. Service that is currently in need. Within the entire state of New Jersey. You'll hear very shortly about what's involved here. You have to qualify medically. There will be thirty-two apartments, all of them one bedroom, one. No, home hangland, nothing such as that. There will also be one apartment on the first floor. That apartment will be occupied by someone that will be providing twenty-four hour care. When I say that, there will be someone on site. Providing services and access to the facility on a twenty-four hour basis. So that. The entity involved will have services and that will be described in depth. That support the the residents as well as the purpose of the entity. What I'd like to do is mention as. Mr. Kennedy said before, this really is under the Municipal Land Use Law, your testimony. About this being described as an inherently beneficial use. I spoke to Mr. Kennedy about that and I'm sure he will advise the board the impact of that. And what the legal consequences that are. But, uh, and you will hear testimony tonight that this is an inherently beneficial use. As to similar purposes in this particular. I I'd like to introduce first. First witness, John Klein, here at the principles.
All right, good evening. Good evening and welcome to the Red Bank zoning board. If you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear or I want you to state your name and business address, please? Or residential address?
My name is John Klein. Business address is twenty-five Root Street.
All right, good evening and welcome to the board. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God? Thank you.
Klein, just a few, um, that's your background information. You are the former CEO of Premium Outlet Smalls, correct?
That's correct.
And you are the former chairman of the board of the applicant that preceded us. Being lunch break, you were there at lunch break for many, many years, correct?
Yes, it was actually called president of the board, but that's correct.
And you and your wife are involved in many, many philanthropic. And told you in Monmouth County as well as the state of New Jersey.
That's correct.
So would you describe?
No, I'm sorry, we're just not picking you up.
Is your microphone on? No?
Speak right into it. John, can you hear me? Just speak right into it. No, it's not.
Yes.
Shout out to Shawna.
As always, my friend.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to hear our application this evening. I'd also like to thank the staff, the planning department. Done an excellent job. They worked very hard on this application. Can hear about a very unique application. It's about a community of people who've been pretty much excluded from living. As they want to live their lives in the area in New Jersey and frankly throughout the United States. Talking about people with intellectual and develop development, developmental disabilities. There's virtually no housing, certainly not adequate housing. Within New Jersey for this population. There are over two hundred thousand, for instance, with autism, people with autism or. Down syndrome in New Jersey. Many of the neurodiverse community can live independently. So my wife Robin and I and our partner Karen fills our mission to develop neuro-inclusive housing. In support of communities in New Jersey. Red Bank was chosen as the first location. For this groundbreaking project. Red Bank is walkable, it's not overwhelming, it's a wonderful community. Obviously, we live very close. It fosters great institutions such as Lunch Break, Boys and Girls Club, Parker Clinic and many more. It's a town with a hospital, the medical needs and jobs. Which can be very important to the residents of this project. Nearby are community college, universities, both accessible by bus and public transportation. Also, New Jersey trains, transit station in town and bus service that takes you throughout the county. The town is walkable from Broad Street to Front Street, Shrewsbury Avenue. It's perfect for residents who do not drive. Here the testimony that ten percent or less. Of this population would actually have driver's licenses. Residents be encouraged to do charity work, attend local organizations, places, such as the Y M C A. Visit the base seat. Get involved in churches and attend other places in town. Thrive Red Bank, as mentioned, will have thirty-two residents. It's an efficient number. Which is important when providing services to this. And five of the units we designated is affordable. We do have an affordable plan and that has been. You hear from our partner shortly regarding a partnership with the best adult autism program in New Jersey. And there's, uh, as well, you mentioned a studio apartment on the first floor for support. When, uh, especially at night when it was needed. Then the first floor, you see we have a teaching kitchen, gathering space. Amenities for residents, including a number of offices. And meeting areas for health and wellness, support services, therapeutic services and meeting rooms. We ask for this, for approval of this unique, groundbreaking and inherently beneficial project. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Klein?
Any questions, Mr. Klein, from the board?
I do have a question. Is the downstairs unit for a couple?
That would be for a resident assistant.
It will be a resident assistant who comes every day or shift work?
There will be shift work about twenty-four seven service navigator, as we call it.
So it won't be, it won't be one person who's always on site?
It'll be somebody that will, who can be there at night as well. Anticipating that the nighttime will be less busy, that there be somebody in the building easily accessible to the residents. Effectively twenty-four seven and during the day hours. Twelve plus eighteen hours during the day, there's somebody at the front desk.
And you and you base this on one person per unit, right?
Yes, one resident per unit.
Not sure how to ask the next question. How do you? How do you enforce one person per unit?
We we enforce that through the lease that we have. And it was been managed through a project that we have at consulting arrangements with. In Phoenix, first place in Arizona. In other words, generally, the residents are not married. And if they have the ability to move on and and get married. They'll usually find other apartments in the community. Standard typical apartments in the community to move to.
Chairman, if I can, I can know about, you are not allowed to have more than one person or you.
Yeah, I I understand that. I'm just not sure how how that works when you have. Adults who go out and encourage to interact. And to, I mean, I'm just curious. I think it's a wonderful idea, just not sure how it works, that you can. Limit their socialization as they try or trying to. Become a part, an active part. I mean, I understand the lease. Do they understand the lease? This is, you know, we we have a lot of things that have to be taught. Learned, act upon. We have to be careful of people who take advantage of the opportunity to be inside. Someone else's unit.
And and that's why we have. The house on the third floor to accommodate if people want to have friends over or something such. You could do that on that level. You cannot bring the persons up to your individual. Strictly forbidden.
During the day, you can bring a family.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to feel my way around this.
Yeah, but we would anticipate those who are. Who are, and and so will transition through here, but technically it can be permanent housing as long as they need or feel comfortable. Historically, about, you would expect less than five percent will transition out every year. And move on or become independent.
And the other questions from the board?
Questions? The, um, is is the model, you had?
And you said on the first floor, it was gonna be. Like a teaching room, a kitchen, some therapy.
Yes.
Meeting rooms.
Offices.
Offices. Bring support. So is the whole model based off of the first place that's located in Phoenix? Is that pretty much what you're going up on?
Similar, a number of similarities and changes. Project is smaller and it does not have something that they have in their product called Transition Academy. So the residents that we will be. Screening will have the ability to move in and live. Pretty much on their own with some basic supports around it.
Okay, and so there's like some form of qualification to be admitted as a tenant?
Correct. They will have numerous assessments over the years typically in their. In their education, uh, and the programs they've had and then it'd be assessed by some of the. Governmental agencies for disability income. They have numerous assessments over a period of time.
Okay, and then does. Thrive also perform some assessments at the location that you're?
Effectively thrive slash, um, parents of the plan would manage the residents and, um, yes.
Right, so an application submitted for residency, they submitted?
Have assessments. Attached to the application.
Okay, so then the the promising the applicants would come to the location, they would meet with someone that thrive in one of the rooms downstairs. There would be an assessment done, a report generated, and then someone decides whether or not they're gonna be a tenant?
Correct. They have, I mean, they have to have the capability of of living an independent life. With, I mean, said some, some safety net around it, which is our navigator in the building.
Okay, and that gets qualified by Thrive and the state also, or is it just Thrive?
It's qualified by, um, in our instance, by, um, parents and plan, but also. They have a relationship with Rutgers, uh, Adult Autism Program. And you'll be hearing about that shortly. And they will be helping us provide assessments. We're doing the assessments on the potential residents.
Okay, great. Hey, any other questions?
Good now, it's talk right with the mic.
Interested in what security measures will be in place, for example, building access, security of residents for residents? Anything else of that nature?
Security is of utmost importance of the building for the residents. Historically, there are. The residents. On their own diverse area have been taken advantage of, so it's very important to us to manage the security of the building. Who is in the building, who lives in the building and then knowing where they are. Who's in the building at all times, effectively. All of our staff and including security staff will need to be assessed properly. And it's critical to the project, absolutely.
That they would have no problem, you know, non essential lighting. Miscellaneous, the mechanical equipment, that would be, that testimony is by the architect on the locations of that. Nine point two, a lot consolidation, no issue there. Five, nine point three, this is the point by point response, so be free to provide a letter like this for any subsequent letters. Nine point four gets into the building department, that's informational, same thing with nine point five is informational. And nine point six gets into approvals and labors from the following agencies which we agreed to follow. The environmental information comments are on the next page, one and two were informational. Number three encouraged us to put the solar on the roof, which is a good idea. Number four was informational, number five. Then, there was five and six were both informational, but if you read those comments, they were actually very positive. Us, and then the next section is the affordable housing comments. They have, the applicant has retained an affordable house, there may have been. And then the shade tree commission comments. Just speaks to the number of trees required, we are pressing a design effort for that, and then of the six trees, it gets to the developer, we have no issue revising.
That's it, I'll send the, uh, end of the letter.
So Ms. Flora, five things. So largely, can you just characterize the, the building as it relates to what's out there right now? Uh, in case anyone's interested in this, may, may float into the architect's testimony as well, but. Generally speaking, the driveway is going to be on Shrewsbury.
Right.
But not Dr. Parker, I know that was a prior concern, the first time we saw this property. Uh, so that was modified, so this is largely going to be similar to where we ended up with the prior application, uh, on the. I think that will be more northerly face of the Shrewsbury Avenue building, um, closer to the river. And so generally, it's going to be sidewalk improvements, the building's going to be. Uh, pretty much behind the sidewalk, which is similar to a lot of the properties in the, in the storefront type scenarios there. There'd be a little bit of. Offering to the, uh, Dr. Parker side. Uh, I call that the east side, because I think that's what it is, I'm not sure that, North Arrow is correct there. It's confusing me a little bit of like. Yeah, so, um, all right, now that's. I thank you for going through the letter, I think that was informative, I think probably most people are somewhat sleeping at this point, but. Um, I think the, uh, the pizzazz will be more of the architecture, and I, I know oftentimes folks want to. What's it going to look like, what am I going to see as a neighbor, as someone walking up and down the street, things of that nature, so. I'll hold comments for some of the architectural, and the parking will be provided by, uh, Mr. McCormick, I believe, so.
So I thi- I think, Mr. Chairman, I think those comments because of the fact that you pointed out something that I shouldn't point out that. Uh, I was involved in the prior application on the site, so I heard firsthand of the comments that were raised previously. So this applicant was very cognizant of those comments, even the location of the refuse is purposely in the garage. Because we didn't even want the access for the refuse to be on Dr. Parker's property. We were very sensitive to that. Um, and, and this applicant took that very seriously, every aspect of how this site was laid out. Makes comments that were previously heard into consideration, so you're going to see the access to land, like in the location where it was previously asked to be. Uh, you're going to see that we don't have any vehicular access on Dr. James Parker's boat. You don't even need to worry about a reference trump, so we made sure we didn't claim even the reference. So, so we did try to take, we've heard in the past, and go on it, clear, it's a totally different application. Uh, but those, those key comments that we heard from the public in the past, we did, we didn't just say.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are we going to hear from a traffic engineer today also? And I see comments from the fire, um. That they submitted a plan from the, uh, or addressed comments for the borough fire official about emergency parking and emergency access, will we hear those also today? Okay, thank you.
And I have a question from the board. Any questions from the public for this witness? Okay, close that public portion and move on to your next.
I, I will do that immediately.
Thank you.
McCormick can do the board thing?
All right, good evening and welcome, if you could just state your name and business address, please?
Yes, John McCormick with Dynamic Traffic, business address nineteen oh four Main Street, Lake Como.
Okay, and you are testifying tonight in your capacity as?
As a traffic engineer.
All right, good evening and welcome, if you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, I hope you got it? Thank you.
I miss when we can, for, yeah, it's a qualification, because we had some.
Absolute board member here, absolutely. I can do it. Uh, so I've been a professional engineer for over twenty-five years, uh, practicing traffic engineering. Uh, I have a New Jersey PE license, I have a certification that's a professional traffic operations engineer. Uh, I've been on as Jackie, uh, both sides of the board, providing land use testimony for private clients, as well as. Uh, providing consultations to land use boards on a traffic basis.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, uh. John, you know, mine's like, why is John?
Please.
Um, compared to the traffic report that's presented as part of this application, correct?
Correct.
And, um, would you run through the important parts of your report, minus specifically. Part of the faces, um, the dust in front of trips, reason why would you need. Really, your apartment spaces as well as site access itself?
Sure, sure, uh, so, uh, as was stated, we prepared a letter dated March twenty-second, it's in the applicant's package. Uh, Mr. Herman reviewed it, some of the comments were specifically directly related to that. I'll go through just general, uh, direct testimony, trying to get most, if not all of those things, if there's something I missed, please, we'll, we'll go back. But as Jackie mentioned, right at the end, the access for this property is being simplified. Um, currently, there are two driveways, uh, Dr. James Parker Boulevard, we're removing them both. Um, there is currently one driveway, uh, Shrewsbury Avenue, we are sliding it away from the intersection. Basically, as Jackie mentioned, in the same location as was previously approved, uh, by the other applicator. Uh, that, that driveway will require, uh, review and approval by the county, uh, because Shrewsbury Avenue is a county road. Uh, the traffic generation, uh, I know there was some discussion about it, uh, uh, earlier. So the thirty-two units really is projected to generate minimal traffic. What we utilize, uh, for traffic generation estimates is what, or can we say, or someone else say, is the ITD, Institute of Transportation Engineers. They have a publication that takes data from all over the country, all different land uses. Uh, and it, and it provides us with a tool to estimate the traffic generation during the peak hours. What we did, because this is a somewhat different, uh, residential type use, we looked through the ITE book. And we actually found a land use that I think is, uh, it was amazing how similar it is. Uh, it's called Congregate Care Facility, and I'll just read you a couple of the words out of the definition. Uh, that made us feel very comfortable that this is an appropriate and accurate land use. Uh, so it starts with, a congregant care facility is an independent living development. That provides centralized amenities and organized social recreational activities. Each individual dwelling unit often has a kitchenette, assistance is typically available for housekeeping or minor household neighbors. So I think, uh, the patient world, that's a pretty close definition to what, uh, we have in front of us. When you look at what ITE estimates for that type of land use, it's very minimal, in the morning, the morning peak hour, we're looking at three or four trips. Uh, we think that's primarily going to be our staff coming in for the day. Uh, and if you look at the weekday evening peak hour, uh, there's about eight trips. Um, which we think is, you know, some staff leaving, maybe some visitor activity coming and going. But when you see these numbers, they're single-digit numbers, and these are the peak hours, these are the peak hours of the roads, so. Uh, when I look at that, then I look at previous uses on the site, there's a, there's a commercial building there. Uh, that commercial building, you know, was a mix, I don't even know exactly what it was, but it was office, detail, it's karate school. That can be re- reoccupied, and that has trip generation capabilities, right? And the, the current approved use is a mixed-use building, it's got apartments in it, it's got first floor retail in it. And when you compare those things, the current approval would actually generate probably twice as much peak hour traffic as this would. And it's probably close to a hundred more trips in a day than we will generate, so this is really a significantly, uh, low trip generator. Uh, and it, this approval would result in a decrease, uh, in the traffic at this property. We'll get into parking a little bit, um, as you heard, we're providing thirteen spaces. Uh, we are very confident in that parking supply, and I'll give you a few reasons why. Uh, the ITE, as I just mentioned, they not only do a trip generation, uh, publication, they also do parking generation. So they try to estimate, uh, the number of the parking demand for these types of land uses. Again, congregant care facility is in their publication. The, the definition there is resident vehicle ownership is typically low at congregant care facilities. Site employees, persons providing service to the residents and visitors generate the majority. So again, it's very consistent with what you've been hearing, what we expect, and what we anticipate this facility to make. The ITE estimates the parking demand at point three spaces per unit. Right, so for, of the thirty-some units, it's ten vehicles parked. Right, ten vehicles, that's the demand, we have thirteen parking spaces, so we exceed the ITE estimated parking. I'll go further and I'll get more longer. The household characteristics and vehicle ownership, as you've heard, is not typical, it's not like a typical apartment building. The parents with a plan provided me with some data, uh, and you heard snippets of it already from John and others about, um. The transportation characteristics of their population. The first one is that it's only ten percent, or maybe ten percent, I should say it that way, maybe ten percent. Uh, have driver's licenses and therefore would have cars, so in our project, that's about three vehicles. Um, staffing, it's anticipated that there could be one staff per eight residents or so during the day. That's about four staff cars, so you add that together, it's about seven vehicle demand during the day, we have thirteen spaces, so we're almost double the anticipated demand. Then we get into, you heard a lot about ride share, um, the parents with a plan. Uh, did some surveys and they identified that about twenty-five percent of their residents can and do use ride share, not all of them. Uh, but definitely a population would and will use ride share. So about twenty-five percent of those residents, maybe there's seven, eight, nine, ten residents that feel comfortable and are capable enough to use ride share. So that, that type of, uh, use all but eliminates the need to own a car. You heard John mention mass transit, one of the reasons this site was picked, the plentiful mass transit, not only do we have, uh, two NJ Transit clubs. Right at the corner, we can walk to, uh, Red Bank train station, it's less than a ten-minute walk. Um, so again, that's particularly, uh, why this site was chosen, Shrewsbury Avenue, Red Bank. Uh, I also took a look at On Street Family, it's here a couple of years ago. Learning for, you talk about parking for lunch break. I hear the very detailed, um, on-street parking analysis of the four or five blocks surrounding lunch break. Some of those same blocks kind of surround or right up against this project. What we found then, uh, is consistent with what I see today, is that almost every block has two-sided, both sides of the street, free parking. Uh, and most of the blocks have open spots. Back then, and around lunch break, there's a little bit more parking demand, I saw blocks with more than twenty-five percent of the spaces are available. Around our project, it's even more so, streets like Bank Street, Bridge Avenue, and, and the other side of Dr. James Parker, on the other side of Coffee Corral. Routinely have numerous spots available, so we think that if there is an overflow, we have on-street parking supply that can more than accommodate. So for all those reasons, we are very comfortable, uh, in the thirteen spaces we have combined. That's, that's the, let's talk about, let's talk about the loading, so we talked about. Move-ins and move-outs or loading activity, I mean, this building is going to get, uh, UPS and FedEx, those types of things, it's going to be Amazon packages coming in. Just like any other apartment building, uh, move-ins and move-outs, just like any other apartment building are scheduled, they're scheduled with management. These are small apartments, remember, so we're envisioning small, advanced trucks, smallest type of U-Haul you can even imagine would more than be, uh. Sufficient to use for these apartments, those types of things can actually come into the building if they so desire and use one of the parking spots. If that's a realistic, uh, uh, consideration. And also, there's a frontage that has. There's no parking, so there's no parking for about, it's got to be at least sixty feet from the intersection. Um, so that, that area can and will be used for quick drop-offs, a quick, uh. Amazon delivery or Uber Eats delivery, and could be utilized if there's a oversized. Uh, U-Haul truck or something that needs a place to just sit and stage, uh, for fifteen or twenty minutes while it's underway. So, so we, we are comfortable and blessed that we have the frontage that we have, uh, and that it's not encumbered as of yet with parallel parking in front of us.
John, can you touch on, um?
Oh, Jackie mentioned it, but the refuse for this size building is going to be a couple of times a week. Uh, it's a private Carter, similar to any other apartment building in this, in the refuse regard. Uh, they are going to pull up to the, to the garage door, the Carter is going to have a code or, uh, or however, or they're going to call into the front desk. Front desk will open the garage door, the Carter will walk in, roll out the dumpster, will tip the dumpster, will walk back in. Put the dumpster back in the refuse area and walk out, close the door behind, so it's no different than any of the other four apartment buildings I've worked on at Red Bank. Where the private Carter goes actually A two, the garage, to the parking area, brings the dumpster out and puts it back. Where the private carter goes actually into the garage, to the parking area, brings the dumpster out and puts it back. Uh, this is not the responsibility of of the building management, the responsibility of the private carter. As you heard, Mr. Klein, he already had those displayed, routine for these carter to do that, and they've uh they've said they will do that. Um, you know, the one other thing is just the uh the parking spaces within the garage. And I know uh we always have this little um discussion back and forth about the first space, you know, coming into the garage. And the garages are tight, there is a foot or two um in between the wall and the first space. And I'll point to where Ed's talking about. It's basically this spot right here and this spot right here, where you would come in off of Shrewsbury Avenue and have to make a tight turn to get into those spots. Uh, there's no doubt that that turn is tighter than some of the spots further in. The aisles there are industry-standard twenty-four-foot aisles. This is going to be a very low turnover in a very familiar uh garage for people. This is not a public garage, this is not a convenience store, this is, these are people that have a key fob, that have access to this building. They're going to park in the same parking spots pretty much every day, probably, and they're going to be very familiar with how to get into those spots if needed. Uh, so I'm very comfortable with that layout. We have layouts similar to this where bigger apartment building, it's it's tenants that come in and out, maybe get assigned that spot. Uh, this is going to operate very similar to that, uh and I think it's it's fine because it is familiar and very much low turnover. I think those were them then. Uh, and I don't know, if there's things that I missed, uh I'd be happy to go.
Yeah, one question about the, I I guess the part, the parking garage, there will be a a door that. They don't open anymore when you're pulling in?
Yes, so the new technology is uh the doors are equipped essentially with a key fob, with the drivers are equipped with a key fob. So as they approach the door, the residents or the staff that have access to the garage, the door goes goes up while they're sitting on Shrewsbury Avenue waiting to turn it.
And is there a island for the right turn in and right turn out?
There is not.
Because you know, people will turn off Shrewsbury Avenue, it's a very, very busy road. Almost all the time. And people will turn from the, from the, the southbound lane into there. And people will, same thing, pull out of the garage and want to turn that way also, which could be a real problem.
Yeah, well, so what we're thinking, are you talking about an island in the middle to?
When you're coming out of, when you're coming out of garage, like there's a parking garage over on Front Street that has one. But people are always going over it and making wrong turns. That's a concern on Shrewsbury Avenue, because it's a, it's a nightmare that street.
Yeah, like you mean a little pork chop island in the middle, yeah. Uh, no, at this point, it, we're revisiting this as a somewhat different from the last application, the currently approved application in that. Uh, the the type of activity and the users for this garage uh are going to understand the system. Uh, it's going to be such low turnover, I don't anticipate people coming and going at the same time, quite honestly. I think it's just uh the likelihood of that happening is very low when you only have, say, seven or eight cars that use this garage on a daily basis.
I have a question, you have a thirteen spots? And from the um parents with a plan, maybe you can refresh my memory, you said about ten percent of the adults. What happens if more of them can and want to? So if I only have thirteen spots, let's say ten percent of the residents, it's only three adults get a parking spot. And I heard in your testimony, they would be assigned, so is there a parking permit that is going to be granted to someone? And then how do you address giving the opportunities to those who can without the space available to them?
Well, it it's anticipated that a small population, whether it's ten percent, fifteen percent, whatever that number is. It's a small population that is going to, one, have the ability to drive, and two, have a vehicle on this property. Um, that being said, when you looked at the staffing and the resident parking needs that we thought. I was coming up with six or seven or maybe eight parking spots that we would need, and we have thirteen. So I I do think there is a factor of safety built into the supply that we have. Again, it's a management thing. If for some reason, they they have a population that is driving and they need ten parking spaces for residents. The staff will have to park on the street. It's going to be a management though.
What does the nearest public, I'm thinking from a parent's point of view also. I get a call from my kid and he goes to school two blocks away, and I'm racing there, running there, parking his spot. Is there, I know this is kind of unusual, but is there emergency parking? Like if um if emergency vehicles came, or there was an, you know, an event where you had to rush in and all the spots are used. And other people are having friends over, like you testified during the day, which is encouraged. And in that moment, can we get an ambulance in there? Can we get a parent who needs to get in there? Is there a dedicated police spot or something like that where this is for emergency purposes only? And utilized by parents and emergency services in that garage?
I mean, again, again, I think that's that's going to be managed on a case-by-case basis. I think the beauty of the frontage that we have on Shrewsbury Avenue is that there is not parking right in front of the building. For sixty feet, that's like three.
There's not, yeah.
Parking spots, so that area is always open. So it's always open for emergency access, for police car to pull over and ambulance to pull over. Some of those things may or may not wish to go into the garage, they might want to just be right in front and right at the front door. So I think this this project has kind of the best of both worlds. If we do need to get someone into the garage, they could pull in on a temporary basis and just park in the aisle. You know, it's not like there's hundreds of.
And it'll be lettered that way for emergency services outside the building?
I don't know if it's going to be lettered that way, but it would be, it would be, they would call, if there's a call coming from out of the building to have someone come in. They would make arrangements to have the door open, and then the option is theirs.
Okay, and I see comments that will be addressed for the borough fire official, what were those comments that they brought up to the applicant? The applicant agrees to address the comments of the borough fire official, what were his comments?
I don't think.
Okay. And and um just as an aside. In the only application that we've had, never had a problem with the borough fire. Whatever they tell us to do, we're going to do it.
Oh, no, I agree completely, I wanted to know what his concern, you know, what their concerns were, just to, because I agree also, I always.
Usually, and usually if they have a serious concern, we would have had the comment.
By now, you would have, okay, I was just wondering what the comments were, okay, I'll look for that when it, when it's available.
Normally, they would be talking about fire lanes, if there was a driveway around the building, they would want, you know, a designated fire lane immediately adjacent to the building. Here, because it's on the street, they would use basically the street as their fire lane. So they may have comments about perhaps uh some of the parking in front of the building would be, I I think testified to that it's already blocked. A, because of proximity to the intersection, but B, there may also be, you know, sight sightline impacts coming out of the garage that the county is probably going to say. Hey, by the way, we may want to ask you to not have parking within a certain distance. Comment from the county as well, which will serve as a de facto open space that a fire truck or an ambulance or other things of that nature could come up. And the bottom line is, if there's an emergency, they're going to park wherever they park, and it might be double double parked and blocking everything, but. They're going to do what they have to do to address an emergency situation, and you don't generally plan for that in the in the grand scheme of things, you know, day over day. An infrequent occurrence would be the hope.
I think it provided a site safety and logistics plan for the package, just interested in what they had to say about it. Great, thank you.
That sounds inside, also I can answer your question. When we go to the county planning board, they may have some comments for us. But they may say, hey, listen, if we uh want to have parking spaces, that will be fifteen-minute parking hold or something like that. So look, you know, we'll explore that with the county and then we're going to advise on this term and for whatever that results is.
What is the closest municipal lot? I I should know, but I don't. If there's an event, you know. Yeah, that's not, that's not far, the train station lot, yeah.
You're, you're right, it's not a municipal lot, but that lot is out, we go there on almost any day.
After eleven.
Twenty percent of it.
Oh, good, that could be a resource. There's no one ever in those parking.
Actually, uh discussing uh parental visits and things like such as that. Some of the people that we spoke to that were considered. I have children, but I, I call them children, but they're adults, but that, to have them move in there, they said, well, I can park right down the train.
Yeah, I had um, I had experience in the Oasis Center in Middletown when that was built, I was the project manager for that job. And the parent involvement was the best part of that process and having the availability for them also to arrive and be supportive and join in. There's not enough spots for that, but if there's a municipal lot close by and the parents are aware of that. Those train stations lots after eleven are free, you know, and that would be a good resource, thinking of those. Yeah, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Hey, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a. Sir, did you um, are you familiar with First Place in Phoenix? That's what the model. Um, they have sixty-three apartments and about sixty parking spaces. Did you ask them what the frequency of uh traffic is at their location, like why do they have sixty-three?
This, it's a very different facility, um I'm not the best person to tell you that, I think you've heard already that. That facility has a lot more uh daily academies and some of the words that John and they used. This is not that, this is a portion of what Arizona is. So it's hard to, it's not apples and apples.
But ideally, is it fair to say that you would prefer that there was more parking available on the spot, is that fair to say or?
No, we are very comfortable based on the information and the surveys and what they've seen in Arizona. That's how I got the ten percent drive or have cars, the twenty-five percent are comfortable with Uber. Twenty percent or so are comfortable with mass transit, you know, it's just like any other building. People are comfortable with different things and not everyone's going to drive or not everyone's going to Uber. So those percentages came from them, so uh we are very comfortable with the supply here.
I haven't seen those surveys, if you can submit them as an exhibit, I'd like to take a look at them. But uh First Place also has a loading dock, I mean, ideally, would you prefer to see a loading dock there?
I don't think there's anything to load. I mean, it's general, you know, you might get a UPS of some office, some staple supplies or something.
I don't, yeah, I don't see a loading dock, there's an area for trucks or cars to come for deliveries, and there's an area at that facility where they could park.
And that, I think that is what the frontage is going to be used for. Uh, jurisdiction there, so we have to ask them how we could most effectively use that. But it is available, which is good.
Yeah, let's talk about the frontage. One of the reasons why it is a yellow curb for sixty feet there is for pedestrian safety, is that a fair comment?
Some of it. Title thirty-nine from New Jersey Parking Regulations only requires twenty-five feet from the crosswalk. There's at least sixty feet that is no parking.
Right, and why is it that there's a yellow curb there?
For the twenty-five feet?
Oh, well, right currently, there's about, you said about sixty feet yellow curb.
I'm sure it's yellow curb the whole way, but it is signed no parking.
But we could take a look at it. Um, and then it was.
I have to ask, we're going to ask the county that, because I'm going to ask for some of it.
All right, but either way, there is a portion of that sixty feet that is designated for safety, right, just pedestrians.
Twenty-five feet from the crosswalk, state regulations.
Yes, so is it, and then there was some testimony earlier about ten or so percent or twenty-five percent of the people would be using Ubers to travel periodically throughout the day. Did you hear that testimony?
Yeah.
They could be going somewhere in the morning, in the afternoon, or at night. Thank you to the people. So is it fair to say there could be up to a hundred trips on the Uber that would have to show up?
I think that's a lot.
I mean, in total.
Well, sure, it could be anything, right, but it could be, it would be eight trips, it would be five trips. Um, like I said, there's all.
How many trips do you think on average you have a bid with thirty-four residents, only ten percent drive?
Thirty-two residents, and twenty-five percent of them feel comfortable using Uber. Doesn't mean they're using Uber in and out, in and out, in and out every day, means they feel comfortable using Uber. So the number of trips is going to be small.
Well, how can you say that with experience, we don't know.
Currently approved market rate of parties that are, you know, fully active adult living. They can, they can come and go as they please, there's a portion of our population that might feel comfortable using that service. So yes, there is going to be Uber.
All right, so it could vary from anywhere from a small amount of trips, let's say ten or so a day, it's what you're saying on the low, up to a hundred would be the high. Somewhere in the middle is probably fair.
I'm going to say there's going to be two hundred Uber cars arriving at this site, I'm not.
I say two hundred either, I just want to know on average, how many Uber trips you think there's going to be per day, every single day, if this is approved?
Ten.
Ten a day?
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, I'm just trying to point out. On page three of Mr. Porter's report, they have.
Mr. McKenna.
If you note, that has the previously approved trip generation, which we don't care about right now. But what it does have is the anticipated number of trips per day. And it's fifty-two the entire day.
All right, so fifty-two, I think uh, uh, sir, you had said eight.
That includes the uh boys, et cetera.
Okay, um, so let's use that number, so is it, do, do, are you saying that the the no, the yellow curb? That's designated for safety, you want these people, you want these rides and these deliveries to park at that location? And I think you said remain there for twenty minutes or or so, isn't that a safety concern?
We're going to talk to the county, and like I've done in front of this board and the planning board in Red Bank, when I bring in a apartment project. We look for a loading space in front of the building, right, which is a space where there's no parking, we either create the space or somehow. And that's what we're going to do here, we're going to go to the county and say, listen, you have sixty feet of no parking here, let's talk about why. And let's see if that can be brought down to the state minimum, not minimum, the state regulation of twenty-five feet from the crosswalk. And if that occurs, now we have thirty-five feet to play with. And that thirty-five feet will be either a parking space. Or it can be striked out as a loading space, or it can be marked as a fifteen-minute space. But it's all dependent on what the county says, county has jurisdiction over what any of us do on Shrewsbury.
Right, and the spots though in front of the facility, the proposed uh building. Residents of Red Bank can also park there.
The the spots after the sixty feet.
Right. Public parking, and then if you were to take. Thirty-five feet that we're discussing here. Um, the residents of Red Bank would also be allowed to park there.
Depending on how we market and what they decide, we can designate.
What are you going to submit it as, are you going to submit it, are you going to request the county give you that space, or are you going to request it to be used by all the residents?
I think what we're going to request is that it's a, it's created for parking. And at that point, typically, the county would revert back to the town and would say, well, what what do you want to put there? We're going to allow you to do the parking because it's outside of the state regulated area. What would you like there? The county doesn't want to get into parking business, they don't want to tell you to meter it, to put two hours on it, to not meter it, they don't do that. They'll give you the uh the limits of where parking can park. And then I think we would like to put a usable space in front of the building. For like a fifteen-minute loading, unloading and all the activity that that we're talking about can happen.
Okay, so one designated fifteen-minute space will accommodate, in your opinion, all the Uber rides to and from the facility. All of the um, let's say, if one, if some of the residents have help with one of the programs, if they have to go to work or they have to go to the community college. They have to go to the county base, they have to go to these places. Uh, Amazon, the deliveries for Amazon, then also what about the guests of the visitors, can you re-describe for me? Uh, sir, how many guests do you anticipate on a daily basis coming to visit the facility?
I thi- I think that would be better for John or someone else to really give a sense of the amount of guests that that these residents have. I can tell you from experience with uh grandparents and things in my family, when we go to visit, there's not a lot of visitors. Now, I don't know if that's the case with this type of facility or not.
Okay, I don't want you to guess on it, if you don't know, you can just say.
Your ship is probably relatively low uh on a daily basis.
Is this a guess or you have knowledge of this?
That's, that would be my guess.
Okay, I don't want you to guess. Is it fair to say also that there's no safe drop-off spot for Uber, Amazon, groceries, delivery or anything on James Parker? Is that a fair comment?
That's a live lane against the curb there, so yes, that is not a safe place.
Not a safe place, so the only really safe place would be if you got designated fifteen-minute parking or a loading dock spot in that area that currently is a yellow curb.
Or we'll let them in the, or we'll let them in the garage.
Let them in the garage, you want, the Ubers will go into the garage?
Yeah, yeah, we manage the garage.
What they have to do is go ahead and say, we're ready to pick up Barry Spent or John Jones. And as they get there, they big uh big call, I'm here, they open up the garage, let them in, let the person take it out.
I mean, yeah.
Come on, I'd like to check this, uh that might be helpful. Oftentimes, when we go to the county, what happens is they will say, we bring it to the local level. And get the recommendation of the traffic. So many times what happened is the county may say, well, you know, we're okay, they'll come back to the town, get a recommendation from them, bring it to us. And if we think it's okay, we'll sign off on it. We've done that on a number of. Did uh some traffic.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so they did the same thing, they sent it back to Red Bank. We went to Red Bank, we had the uh, the mechanic safety officer and all. They came up with an alternate plan, the borough did, and we agreed to change our plan. So it's, it's, it's not as uh difficult a process as it may sound. And usually, it's, it's very workable. I, I have to say that, I mean, there, people are flexible, they're not uh rigid. And the county has a pretty good, we have an excellent relationship with the county, Red Bank does, um, so they respect Red Bank very much.
So you anticipate the county coming back to us and saying that we could take thirty-five of that fee and use it how we wanna use it? Is that your anticipation?
I, I, you know, I can't, I can't tell you what the county's gonna do. What I'm saying is that oftentimes, either A, the county will give you what you ask for, or B, they may say, you know what? Bring it back to the local level, meet with your traffic safety officer, and then the police department will come up with a recommendation.
Yeah, I agree. Let me answer another question. The, what distance is it from the yellow curb on Shrewsbury Avenue to the front door of the facility?
I need Jackie's help to that. You, do you know where the, well, you know where the front door, like the, compared to the crosswalk?
Are you referring to the sidewalk with?
I'm referring to uh, from the. On Shrewsbury Avenue to the entrance door of the facility.
So basically, the width of the sidewalk along. Or are you talking about the distance from the intersection to the front door, traveling north along Shrewsbury?
This is the, the end of the yellow curb. On Shrewsbury, the yellow, the yellow is.
Traffic engineer working with a scale. The front door is eighty feet from the slot, from the crosswalk, which is how I measured the sixty feet to the existing no parking zone.
Okay, so we're about twenty feet past the current yellow curb? And if that, so if the sponsor filled along the Shrewsbury Avenue up to the yellow curb before the pedestrian walkway, before the crosswalk. Can you anticipate cars double parking there to allow drop-offs and make the deliveries?
No, I don't anticipate that at all.
If that was to happen, would you agree that that's unsafe?
If it was to happen, sure.
Double park there and let people off directly in front of the facility, is that unsafe?
Yes, but I don't anticipate that happening.
Um, I understand that's, I don't know if that's against the law to do that, but uh, so that wasn't my question. I think it's probably against the law to park in the yellow curb for extended period of time. But I don't think it's against the law to pull up to a facility and let somebody out. So that wasn't my point, but my question is, if that is to happen on a fairly routine basis, um, what should we expect with respect to the traffic conditions at that intersection? Would it get more heavy?
Wouldn't get more heavy.
Would it get backed up?
I don't think so.
Have no effect? Does anybody else have any questions?
I do. Um, and yeah, I'd like to know more about your experience with, with Monmouth County. And I've had a lot of buildings where we do have ride-share lanes, like in this same type of space. Like, I think it could be convenient that if they were amenable to it, that we have this section that's only for ride-share. I think it would provide stability to the residents. Also, this is where we pick up. I think it would provide, you know, ease of pickup and looking for it. I've crossed the street thousands of times looking for my Uber, you know, and if the county was amenable, here is the ride-share pickup, just like an airport. Here's ride-share pickup, it's a constant kinda thing. You could have that many cars.
I one hundred percent agree that it's a, it's an activity that's gonna happen, and we wanna try to find a space for it. Just across the street, uh, what is it, Monmouth and Pearl? Monmouth and Pearl, the apartment that's being built, that would make a lot, we did the same thing there. We created a space in front of the building. Used for the active loading activity. Uh, the, the project you mentioned, it's a low core, right, between uh, between Globe and uh, Mechanics Street. Did the same thing. We actually removed the lane of traffic, we added two meter parking spots and a drop-off uh activity area. So we are very cognizant of how these buildings are.
County, county is supportive, but that, that, I was asking for the point of the county, if they're.
It goes to Mr. Cagno's point that this activity is gonna happen. Let's plan for it. The county's, the county acknowledges that type of activity. Um, but it's their jurisdiction. I can't answer what they're gonna do until we ask them. But I do think there's a great opportunity because there's an excessive amount of no parking in this frontage that I think the county will rely on state statute no parking. And then there would be leftover room to create this space.
And I do think that, I do think that Uber ride-share rides of will be less than anticipated because the site was chosen for the walkability. There's no reason to take an Uber to Foodtown. There's no reason to take a Foodtown, to go to the movies. You don't have to take Uber to go to those. And I've experienced in, in a project very similar, and, and the whole point is the autonomy of, hey, you live in a, I live in this town, I can walk everywhere I need to go. So I don't think, you know, if the, if the need for Uber to go to Foodtown, that might eliminate someone from qualifying for this type of residence because many people will be available to walk. I'm just worried about in, interior parking for me, but if the county was amenable to having like a ride-share location where it's all clearly marked for the residents and for the Uber drivers at that intersection, I think it could help considerably.
Better way to explain it to, to the board would be, we're going to ask the county for relief. Are you gonna get it? Yes, but we, we don't wanna misrepresent the board what we're gonna get from them, but we don't know. You know, do I anticipate their cooperation? Absolutely yes. I, I can't and would not. Uh, being so presumptuous as to represent to the board how they're gonna give us uh two spaces or three spaces, cuz we don't know yet.
And forgive me for not knowing, does that mean parts of the application are being withheld at the time for further response from agencies, the fire official, or or making this decision based on the information we have?
No, no, normally what happens is the, the project gets, it's a, the, the project gets approval subject to.
These counties.
The county, but now, in other words, we then have to go to the county. It's not an option, it's required. When we go to the county and they've got a really good engineering department there, and Monmouth County was lucky, um, you can sit down and talk. And that's our experience, and we've got pretty good luck with it. And they respect Red Bank, I have to tell you that, they do. Um, so we will ask them, just as if the partner, if he comes back and says, I want you to do this. I'm on the fire lane right here, whatever the case may be, we've gotta work with it. So, I mean, even though we get approval, it's approval subject.
Good to know, thank you so much.
And I'll just further that comment. Uh, normally what happens is applicants come to the local uh, planning board, zoning board first. Because the, the most substantive stuff is gonna come from this board. So when they go to the county, they're gonna talk maybe about parking, maybe about traffic a little bit. Um, so it's tip, it's not typical that they would go to the county at the same time cuz they wanna hear what this board has to say. There could be planned revisions that come out of this meeting that it would be silly to send it to them, and then we're gonna change it. And then they have to go back to the county a second or third or fourth time, so they really wanna have a, a good sense of where the project stands. If they can get a conditional approval, one of the conditions mandated by the state is always that you can have outside agency approvals. You can't deny it and wait for them. You basically have to make it a condition of the approval. They have to satisfy the approval comments from the others. And if there's anything that gets revised by, let's say, the county changes something, they would have to bring that back to us.
Any other questions from the board?
I would just like to know, who's testifying as to the loading dock that was five point four?
Thank you, I think you heard the testimony.
I was saying, is that the, is that the testimony about the loading dock that was five four and five five?
That's right. We don't need one.
Sorry, Larry.
In my head, that, that conclusion was reached after discussion with all of the relevant parties, including um, the partners from Phoenix. I'm not saying, they, they said, hey, by the way, guys, you don't need a loading dock dock. But what happens is, we sit down with the architects, we sit down with professionals. What, what type of um, activity are we gonna be having? Uh, it's very frequent that you gather with you, that you don't have a loading dock.
Yeah, I wasn't really talking about, I, I think the word loading dock is being, it's not, I'm talking about more of a loading area. So a designated area for people to come and unload and load certain things. Are you saying you prefer not to have that, even if you could?
Isn't that what we've just been talking about for half an hour? That's what we wanna do in front, we wanna create this, this little area for that kind of Uber and Amazon. If, if that's the loading you're talking about, then that's what we're going.
That, that's where you're gonna go for it.
Yeah, but, but once again, I might add also, John, I don't mean to uh, to speak over you, but please remember also the testimony earlier was, if, if, for example, you're loading somebody in and bringing in a bed or a dresser and so on. You can call ahead, schedule it, and then, you know, you, you, you got the deal. If it sounded on it, it's UPS, you can call ahead, say, I'm gonna be there in three minutes. Now, can you, can you arrange, I'll beat the horn twice, and open up the garage door, they get it.
Has that been your experience on Red Bank? My experience in Red Bank is Amazon parks pretty much wherever they park.
That's absolutely true, right?
And the same with UPS, and same with FedEx, and same with Ubers, right? Isn't that what they do? Well, I think.
They stop in front of my house, you know, I mean, okay.
Well, I think stopping on Shrewsb- on Shrewsbury Avenue with double parking is dangerous, but sir, you don't believe that to be the case.
It's gonna be double parked on Shrewsbury Avenue, Shrewsbury Avenue northbound, too late.
I mean, in other words, parking in front of the facility for, for a drop-off, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, it, so effectively, there is a, there is a parallel parking lane along the entirety of Shrewsbury Avenue.
Yes, I'm familiar.
That for sixty feet in front of our building, it's no, it's striped, there's no parking. It doesn't mean the width is not. The width is still there, so northbound Shrewsbury Avenue traffic will not be impeded at all.
I disagree. I tend to, well, if they pull to the curb, perhaps.
Only a hundred feet forward is in the same linear location. There's a twelve-foot northbound Shrewsbury Lane, and there's an eight-foot parallel parking line. So that twenty foot is in front of our project.
I know, but if there's cars parked in front of there, that's my point. You didn't think that was my point? If there's cars parked adjacent to the curb, so, and cars pull up, they could stop there and unload. You've never seen that before? You've never seen people double park in front of the building?
Sixty feet of uh no parking area and an open curb in front of the building. Quite honestly, no one's gonna double park. In front of someone, next to someone else. They may illegally use that side of the curb. But no, I don't, I don't envision this to be a problem at all. I think this, I looked at this site, I thought it was a home run. Um, so I, I just, I'm having trouble wrapping my head around the, oh, the problem. But we, we, like I said, it's county jurisdiction. We have to go to the county. It's a condition of our people to go to the county. And I hope that uh, that we can resolve all these things at that level.
Uh, excuse me, the police officer said there's a BMW with temporary plates running out to the flagpole. Is anybody in here? Anybody stealing a, well, it's still running. You wanna, I'm out.
I want to just take a five-minute break.
Yeah, we taking a break.
We don't.
The first floor is basically used to have the garage for the residents and also has all of the amenities spaces for all of the residents upstairs. The corner also, corner and corner entrance has a conference room area on the ground floor. I think James Parker Boulevard, Chris Berry. And then we have an Egress corridor from one of the stairs in the upper. You have the center of the building, you have the main entrance. I think we discussed about being over eighty feet from the roof area section. So we have a main entrance coming in your pair, double doors outside, a vestalube and double doors on the inside getting into the lobby. Um, adjacent right off of the vestalube. Repairing office of people, anybody that come in, it'll be somebody there to watch, make sure that is coming in, is allowed. We also have in order to not create an open spans of the lobby. We created sort of like an architectural curve wall feature in here to kind of give privacy to the residents that would be in the lobby area here in the gathering hall. So in order to give them some privacy and separating left from the uh, from the pedestrian walking by. On the left hand side of what we talked about this is what we have the parking area. You have a center aisle parking, uh perpendicular parking of the center aisle. And uh, we talked about the parking, thirteen parking spaces and we have the handicap parking spot. And in between tucked in between that, there's a trash room. Uh, basically where the truck is going to be. Collected, the trash food in the building, so all the residents on the upper two floors will be able to throw their garbage into the trash room. Trash will come down here, be compacted and then taken out in the container as was discussed earlier in. For the rear part of the building in the center behind the lobby. We have an outdoor space that we created, we kind of cut out a part of the building in the rear in order to create sort of a covered overhang. Uh, uh, open space and we also extended that open space a little bit further out. And uh, seating area, so residents can have where they can actually go out there, be able to enjoy the facilities. And I would like to point out the fact that we have a tremendous amount of landscaping all throughout the back of the building here. To create a nice soft uh, scape through the entire area in the back. But we also have a lot of landscaping throughout the building along the adjacent side and also in the hallway in front of the building as well. On the ground floor here, we have all the facility, kitchen, the health and wellness center, uh multi-purpose room. Uh, the navigator studio, this is one of the residential units that's on the ground floor and that is. Persons will be there twenty three seven, taking care of the rightful chair in case the president needs some help. This is, they will be staying here in the evening, so they'll be there available whenever they need them. Tucked in the back of the corner to access to a corridor on James Parker Boulevard. Have our maintenance and your utilities coming into the building, so they'll be secured, the access door access. Here so won't be any access from the street itself, so it'll be very contained from up here into the front. And the laundry key A one oh one, basically with the configuration for all the property of the uh, the residential floor. Uh, center hall corridor, apartments on both sides of the corridor itself. Uh, as you all know, we're all through one bedroom units, um, if you want to have the. Uh, stairs, answer me Chris, plus we're going to have the elevator accessible. And the elevator will also be on a backup generator in case of an emergency or anybody needs to get out. That could be used as a means of uh, security and egress out of the building as well. Um, some of the key things in these uh, types of uh, units is of course, everything's going to be very, uh, of course, it'll be all ADA accessible. The handles are going to be uh, easy to turn. All the facilities, all of the finishes or or wise are going to be non-slip. The units themselves will be also uh, finished with a micro microbial paints, so they don't pick up any microbes at all. So that's a lot of the things that we're putting into the building are things you typically don't do. Um, all the floors will be non-slip floors. All the, all the levers and all the uh, bedroom units will be levers, so it'll be easy access, easy to turn. And all the facilities will be available so that the residents in the area can even navigate in our space. So anyone, if anyone did stand the cap, they can actually navigate easily throughout the space. Or they have plenty of areas circled and walk around the entire space of the uh, of the bottom of the uh. Um, off the elevator corridor, there's also on each floor, they're going to have a lounge and men and space here. Here's where the residents of the floors can actually gather around, sit together and talk, take hours, whatever they want to do. Um, so they have to have a common space of share there. The off the corridors, we're proposing having the hot water heaters. So they're accessible from the outside, so in case there's any issues, maintenance man, take care of any issues that haven't actually entered into the person uh, units at all. With respect to the heating and cooling, we're proposing for all the residential units to have PTAC units, I don't know. More familiar with those through all units, um, that are each in each room, so they'll be. In bedroom, there'll be a unit below, usually below the window, in living room, the same thing, so it'll be a unit. Unit will be set in, so basically on the outside of the building, let's see the elevation later on. It, the, it'll be flush and it'll be integrated with the windows, so it'll be one entire component, so it'll be. It'll look like a one, one piece instead of like a separate uh, heating, cooling unit and then a window, so it's all been designed beautifully, so it kind of integrates. With uh, with the unit above. In the roof area, the only thing we're proposing on the roof right now is we're going to have the, or the solar panels we're talking about doing. Um, since we're going to have the PTAC units for the residential units. The common corridors and the lotting, although there'll be some condensers on the roof here, possibly maybe six condensers at the most. But the majority of the roof will be used for the photo paint uh, uh panels throughout the entire roof. Back to the elevation, um, you can see here, we have combination materials for breaking the exterior of the building with different bricks. Along the uh, lower level, pedestrian level, because basically we want to create a sense of scale to them. Um, based on some of the comments that we've received before from the town. Uh, we're proposing on having the brick colors to be sort of like industrial look, that industrial like red look. And also a couple of like an orange, so basically going back to like the turn of the century type brick. Which kind of in essence ties into some of the other buildings or in the area as well, so. The, there are also having some modern elements in the building too as well, both in having these white, white panels. Um, and some like uh, wood facing panels that are going to be all siding and those are going to be cement board. So it'll be a nice warm richness, we're happy with with panels. Typically, they're going to be acting in corners, the center of the building, again, the corner of the other side. Typically, the most of the ground floor is going to be with the brick and uh. Parapet, one thing I wanted to mention in parapet. Well, typically you need a three foot six height for the parapet of the, of the building. Um, but posing having since we don't really have access to the roof, the roof's not really used. The only areas that are going to be used in the area for mechanical maintenance, so proposing on keeping the primitive parapet lower. So it looks to the building as a lower base to it, so it does not have large and overpowering. And proposing having whatever we need for the mechanical equipment, we're going to have some fencing within that area in order to keep uh. Any, any workers that are working on any units up there, they'll be safely provided. The lot area is, we're going to have some louvers adjacent to the main providing board. It's going to be a solid uh, door which will be rolled up. Again, there'll be access to a key fob, so all the residents or anybody who's watching is going to be able to use it from their car and thinking of man. Yes, same, same thing could be now in the other direction as well. People have louvers on the front of the building and also around the side of the building, um, because it's really going to be an open garage. So uh, the access, the louvers are basically going to be there, so take air moving to the garage, so there's no uh. No need for any mechanical uh, garage.
I got a question for you, are all the units including the affordable ones the same size?
No, they're both small. They're the smallest sized units, we have a couple of units that are five hundred and seventy five square feet. Um, and those were a little bit under what wanted to have one six hundred square feet.
You know, I'm sorry, I don't think the mic's picking you up.
Um, yeah, most of the units are over six hundred square feet, up to seven hundred and change. We've got the majority of the units, there is two units that are five hundred and seventy five square feet. Um, and of course, the unit down below the navigator's small unit. All the residents will have over six hundred square feet for most of the, most of the.
There a reason why all the units couldn't be over six hundred square feet?
Space allocation, that's basically what we're not making money, I mean, we don't want to build anything any bigger, so that couldn't work out with. With the different units in order to accommodate all the other units, we had to make some little smaller, so. Five hundred and seventy five feet is a nice sized unit still. Considering some of these small micro units that you see some, say for five hundred, two hundred square feet. Five hundred seventy five square feet, we're able to still make it uh, handicap accessible, have plenty of space to walk around and looper. And have still a nice, nice sized kitchen. Basically going to be on the end corner here, both opposite ends of the building. So as you can see here, basically you walk in, it's an ADA and you don't have a problem, you have a nice big closet, whatever that. Your ain't, your uh, ADA kitchen. Where you have, you don't even have an other middle space here, you have a nice space for living area. And of course, you have again, your bedroom, which basically we designed the bedroom to always be at least have a minimum of a clean sized bed in it. Um, so there's plenty of room around it and all the bedrooms have six foot or so tall and so. It's a little under six hundred, but they're very easily there, they work very well and they're very accommodating.
Is it just the two on the, is that the second floor and none on the third floor, is that where?
Both the plates are basically the same.
Okay, so two, two here and two above.
Um, as you see, the other units were six hundred and fourteen, six hundred and thirty, six hundred and twenty eight square feet. Perfect, so most units are larger, but again, these work quite well as well, so it's not, you're going to be like totally, you're tightening. And on the other sheet one oh four, you basically show uh, the rear of the building itself here. Again, you can see the white, white panels, we have a cement work panel completely here. And we have the accent with the wood in the center, which is basically where the access to the rear courtyard is there. And on the right hand side here, we see the back of the garage area, basically the open space, air is flowing in and out again, so it's not. It's not a closed space, we have plenty of light in the, in the garage when, when they're. Sun is out and even in the evenings, you put plenty of lights, you'll like walking and going inside. Um, on this sheet, we also show the lighting that we call in the building itself. Uh, all the lighting is going to be fielded, so there'll be no light directly in your face, you're not going to see any light in your face. And everything's going to be nice sky, so there'll be no light illuminating up to light up the sky, so basically everything's going to be fielded. And uh, it's been illuminated down. Basically, this is, we're proposing to have, this is the color rendering pretty much of the buildings. In the area, the context that we're looking at, some of the red brick buildings. See these buildings here, they also have two different colored brick, the red and the orange. So again, we're trying to heighten the neighborhood, try and. The structure is going to be blending, well, perhaps a little bit, and also creating a little more of a modern flair, seeing this building. And canopy, so creating like the old and the new. Um, you know, just positions one to the other. One of the, one of the exhibits I do want to show, I think it's going to help the board a lot. Is to fill the color rendering, what the building's going to look like.
Excuse me, Mr. McKenna, do we need to mark this into the record?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is going to be A twenty and this is an illustrated rendering prepared by.
A architecture.
Got it, and is there a date on that?
We're going to give it to the date since we. Again, going back to what I was saying as far as the materials and the lighting, so as you can see here, we have the.
You know, I'm sorry, just bring the mic to your face.
I'm sorry, as you could, we have a red brick and in the corners there, we have some actual columns in between. And you can see that the red brick against the orange brick creates a less rich background to it. Also gives you a lot of texture, anybody walking around, it gives it a nice human scale. Um, and one of the things I did want to notice, because we have these sections of the building that actually jump out, jump out. These are these uh, white pan cement or panels. And what I was discussing before, as you see the windows and those grills underneath the windows will also be your heating. Uh, uh, window of units in the apartments, so as you can see, they all look like one integrated unit. Um, so it's going to be a nice, nice look. In between, we're going to have the darker cement gray panels again, again, sort of create more of a more modern look as well, so the combination of one and the other. And between that, we're flanking it with a cement or panels like a, like an old, like a rusty uh, gray panel. Sort of again, create a blend between the brick, the modern uh, uh, seen facade and then other textures to the building. What we're doing is we're accenting the corners of the building with that dark uh, accented uh, wood, weathered wood look. On the center of the building, on the corners of the building, and also when you recess in between the bump outs that we have created. So it's going to, it's going to create a lot of movement to the facade, it's going to create, uh, it's going to be really, it'll be interesting, anybody's going by. I also would like to note that you see the lighting on the building as well too. Over these bump outs what we have, both in having lighting underneath, they're just washing down, so you won't see it. But one of the nice things about that is that you're going to be illuminating all that nice landscaping throughout the building at night, so it's going to be. Really spectacular, you'll see unless you follow each round, all the corners of the building, the entrance and all the areas, so. It's going to be down lighting, you're not going to see it, it's hidden underneath, underneath the overhang here. So it's going to create a nice glow throughout the primitive building. And we're also going to have some lighting at the very top of the entrance of the building, as you can see, this two-story entrance will give you for certain. Acknowledgement of the front of the building, so in the main entrance. So these lights will be up here and they'll be washing that handles gray, weathered wood panels. By the building entrance, we're also showing you, of course, we have a nice glass entrance storefront with the lobby. Supposing having a canopy sort of matching the same color of the weathered wood. And uh, I know at this point in time, we have, we're not going to discuss signage, but what we're showing on the rendering right now is showing. A signage above the canopy entrance and we're showing also some slack on the brick wall adjacent to the entrance of the building. So depending on what application for our signage, future we go forward. Um, we have something to release for you to see, we're proposing having some signage at this present time, the size and the height will be determined every month. Uh, I think this gives you a good perspective of what the building will look like. Again, but we believe that it fits quite well with the neighborhood. Um, picking up a lot of the uh, other materials in the neighborhood incorporating into the building. And uh, it's a nice open, very inviting building, large windows in all the units. Lot of windows on the front floor, meeting room, conference rooms, so it's going to be nice and open, it's going to be very inviting front of the building. Um, so I believe, you know, I think we succeeded in making something that's going to be attractive to uh, everyone, all the residents in the area as well.
Well, we got a couple of minutes, so you know, any board members have questions?
I kind of do it quick.
I have a couple, I, I just have a couple of questions.
Are we losing any sidewalk space um? As a result of the new footprint of the building, or is it going to fit within the current footprint of what's there now?
No, well, well, it's not going to be exactly built in by the sidewalks, we'd say, we're not.
Not approaching at all, the only difference would be the landscaping, uh, I guess for lack of a better word.
But the size of the sidewalks hasn't been changed, um, only the back.
I'm sorry, just.
In order to accommodate the landscaping.
Okay, so the landscaping would fit, would fit within the current footprint of the building that's there?
Current footprint of the building.
There's a current of the building that's there now.
Yeah. The sidewalk, the, now the inside wall there is not being, not being affected, but.
Okay, that's good.
I have a question for the heat pumps, the mini splits in each unit, I think they're great, um, where are the condensers?
Sorry?
The condensers for them, for the heat pumps, any splits?
Only once we're going to have the heat pumps, and those are going to be for only the common corridors, the lobbies, all of the many rooms, all those public rooms. Everything else in the units are going to be the DTAC units, which are actually in each of the buildings, so.
I've never seen one without a condenser, that's pretty cool.
Sorry?
I said, I've never seen one without, I've never seen one without a condenser, a heat pump without a condenser on a, on a building, so that's pretty cool.
Yeah, it's not a heat pump, but it is a heating cooling system.
So we'll have air conditioning for each one of the residents without a condenser.
Correct, integrated one unit.
Oh wow, that's the one that you indicated on the roof.
No, this, this is the one that are underneath the windows here, the grills here, they're going to have, they're going to have the air and heating cooling unit behind it. So that's going to be used to bring air in and bring it out of the unit itself, but that's where they get the air, that's where they spill the air out.
Oh, so there's no condenser for that unit?
Correct.
Okay.
The necessary for the common corridors, the lobbies and all the amenities.
Okay, cool, thanks.
And mechanicals for those will be on the roof?
Correct. So it's going to be limited, so maybe, maybe we'll work.
Out of sight, out of mind, correct? From the street, you won't see them.
Correct, and then we're going to be imposing again with a gate, fencing, so you would not. Again, that helps keep our power lower, so the building doesn't blow.
Understood, uh, two follow-up questions, the, I don't think we talked a whole lot about the trash collection. I gather there's going to be a trash chute on each floor, will be common collected into the garage area. Is there a compactor or do you envision that you'll have enough space just in a typical dumpster?
Yeah, no, we have an actual trash room on each floor and a trash room actually has access to the chute. You have by the hopper, you throw the garbage in the hopper, it goes down and there's a, it's a compactor in the, in the.
There is a compactor division.
Um, but also on each floor next to the trash uh, hopper, there's also a canister there for recycling. So anybody goes in there, they drop recycling, uh, they could take their recycling and they could probably at the same time, put in the same thing and they, maybe.
Uh, the second question is, can you confirm the height of the door and or the clearance into the garage space? There was some testimony about different vehicles being able to access, I just want to understand. Uh, the, the total clearance at the door and the, the lowest member, like what side of the wall would fit in that garage?
Typically, we wouldn't expect a fire truck to go in there, for instance.
Correct, well, we have more than enough height to make it larger if we have to. But the minimum we need, it was eight foot two, because we have handicap spots on the inside of the garage. Based on that, we need a minimum of eight foot two clearance, because the handicap spot have to buy or a handicap accessible van in there. And that's the minimum requirement for uh, for that, you know, to have access. We have space to go higher if we need to, what we try to do is try to line up the garage door with all the other. Uh, openings, kind of streets in the building in order to make it look consistent and nice and neat.
Would you expect any oversized vehicles, uh, vans, U-Haul type things to want to be able to go into that garage? Or do you think they would be better suited to uh, the on-street space that we had previously been discussing at length, uh, as maybe a better option?
Probably, I think on the street, it'll probably be better.
That's all for me, thank you.
Sir, can vehicle, if the parking in the, in the underground, um, or in the interior of the building is full. Can cars go in and still turn around once they realize this, come back out, is there a maneuver that they can do?
Well, people are going to be in going throughout, they're basically going to have a spot, again, everything here. All the spots are going to be assigned, so everybody knows where they're going to be. So there's, you know, they're going to come in to know their cars are going to be there, nobody's going to be in a spot.
Yeah, we did hear that testimony, but is that the, in fact, the case, Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, um, and with regard to the turnaround, there's a twenty-four foot aisle this year. So we have a, a very, uh, it's in quite a basis, so you should be able to turn around with that.
Everything is full, I can pull in, I can make some different maneuver, turn back around.
Basically, twenty-four feet is one and a half, one and a half, to make a.
Make it a K turn?
Yeah.
Hey, any other questions from the boards?
I've got a question, um, if you could put up the first floor plan again? So our ordinance requires a fifteen-foot buffer along residential areas, um, but you're asking for variance, can you address that?
Yes, well, as you can see, we set the building back on the ground, of course, we can have landscaping in front. Um, but we are, that is one of the appearances that we already.
Well, I mean, the buffer to the residential areas on.
The back.
Oh, yes, yes, correct, yes. We have, well, here in the rear, we have twenty feet. On the side here, we basically have ten feet here, for the exception of one little corner where the actual site itself actually kicks in. So that's why you see the uh, requirements, we only have five feet, and that would show the uh, zoning uh.
So then, why didn't you make it bigger?
Sorry?
Why couldn't you make it larger, bigger?
What larger?
Buffering.
Well, in order to accommodate programming of the building that we needed to create, those are the buffers that we were. Um, and again, one of the things you should consider is that we have beautiful landscaping above the entirety. So any, any residents of the backside, what they're going to see is just a wonderful landscaping with a minimum of like five feet in one section and up to ten feet on the other side. And twenty of those five years, it's going to be a lot of landscaping above all the bedrooms here, as well as the adjacent side here again. We have all that's even a little by the lawn, the perimeter of the property adjacent to the other uh, properties. We also have additional landscaping right up against the building, so to create a double tier of landscaping.
And the entrance to the maintenance, is that gated on the south side?
It's, it's enclosed a door, it's a wall of doors.
No, I meant to the sidewalk, is there a gate there?
No.
So is there anything that prevents somebody from entering that and going all the way to the door?
No, so there's a fencing around the entire property, so yes, it will be a gate, it'll be a secure gate, yes.
Okay, anybody else from the board have a question? Anybody from the public have a question? Miss Architect, okay, we'll close that, um, we're past our nine thirty time, so I think we probably need to.
Let me, let me say, you don't bother, uh, we understand that, and, and uh, we would like to come back, we only have one more, we can descend above the panel. Um, other than that, the, uh, the application is complete. Uh, we'll, we'll come. Uh, July. It's okay, you know, put this your, uh, a meal on first, and then, then I can follow up with the graphics.
If I say one more thing, to say that, you know, our firm, we're really proud of this, of this project. We really think that it's a positive influence to community and, and, you know, our clients have been terrific and it's just kind of something that. We feel really good about and uh, both the board does send it there.
All right, so Mr. McKenna, we're going to adjourn this application, carry this application to September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, six thirty P M without the need for any further public notice, you consent to that?
Yes, I do.
And on behalf of your client, you consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, the public, once the board, uh, if the board makes this motion to carry it, uh, we're going to come back September seventh. At six thirty, but you're not going to get another notice, this is your notice. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if the board so, is so inclined, do we have a motion to carry this application to September seventh, two thousand twenty-three?
Six thirty P M.
I will make that motion to carry this application to September seventh.
Two thousand twenty-three. Thank you very much.
And Tori?
Uh, yes.
Raymond Mas?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan? Oh, sorry, yes, Ben Euro?
Yes.
Charlie Lee?
Yeah.
Vincent White?
Yes.
Paul Cagnu?
Yes.
I do. Motion to adjourn.
Second?